All righty, good evening and welcome to the MCPS Board of Trustees. We are going to pass the meeting over to the chair in just a moment, but I'll do a quick Zoom tutorial for those of you that have joined us. If you have joined via your computer, you have some controls on the bottom of your screen. The first one on the bottom left-hand side is your mute. Please stay muted unless you're making a public comment. Right next to that is your start and stop video. You can control that yourself as well. We have disabled chat for this meeting and Chair Holland will detail. If you need to raise your hand in order to make a public comment, what you're going to do is go to the bottom of your screen, click on the icon that says Participants. That will open another white window which has a list of the participants and at the bottom you'll see a little button that allows you to raise your hand to be acknowledged for a public comment. If you're on the telephone and you'd like to raise your hand, you are going to press star nine on your telephone keypad. And then when it's time for you to unmute, you are going to press star six. With that, I will turn it over to Chair Holland to start the meeting.
Thanks, and I'll welcome everyone to the first meeting of each month, annual or monthly meeting of the Board of Trustees for MCPS. And the agenda is available online. So the first item is to call to order welcome and roll call. We did roll call informally before the meeting started. All trustees are present except Trustee McDonald, and we will watch to see if she does join the meeting. So with that, I will welcome everyone and will stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Is there any request from any trustee to revise the agenda? I'll be looking around the room physically and then I'll check online.
Trustee Decker is indicating that she has a comment.
Trustee Decker, are you there?
Thank you. There is no audio coming through on Zoom when the chair was speaking or during the pledge.
Okay, thank you. We will keep trouble shooting.
Dave, can you check on the Zoom up here if it's muted or not?
On the, which, on that computer?
There we go.
We're just on pause to see if we can resolve this problem.
There we go.
Trustee Decker, can you hear me now? Okay, see you nodding. Thank you for letting us know. So now we come to 4A, which is to approve the minutes from the Board of Trustees' regular meeting from August 11th, which begin on page three. Is there any indication from any trustee for any revisions to those minutes? I'm not seeing any hands up in the room or on Zoom. So is there a motion by a trustee to approve the minutes from the August 11th regular board meeting? Moved by Trustee Olperson, seconded by Trustee Lorenzen. All trustees in favor of approving the minutes from the regular board meeting of August 11th, please indicate by raising your hand. And I'll check. And trustees on Zoom have also raised their hands, so those are approved unanimously. We then move on to the special meeting minutes from August 20th that begin on page 12 in the attachments. Are there any requests for any kind of revision to those minutes? Seeing none, then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting from August 20th, 2020? Moved by Trustee Lorenzen, seconded by Trustee Olperson. All those in favor of approving the motion to approve the minutes from August 20th, please indicate by raising your hand.
Trustee Wade, Trustee Sturges, and Trustee Decker have all received.
Thanks. So that those minutes are approved unanimously. Then we move on to public comments regarding non-end agenda items. So I'll explain generally how a public comment works on non-agenda items. The public is welcome to comment on any item that we don't list as an agenda item tonight. We ask each person to limit their comments to three minutes, to identify themselves, to spell their first or last name if it has an unusual spelling. And if you represent an organization, identify that organization. And I will be relying on Katton to help me identify people who want to make public comment. And again, we'll try to encourage you to stay to three minutes. And we do have, I think, a one-minute indicator and a time-up indicator. So with that, we'll open it to public comment, and I'm going to mute myself. Okay, so just a reminder, if you'd like to make public comment, please raise your hand. I am not seeing any requ- Not seeing any hands raised.
I have one message I need to check.
Trustee Decker, can you hear me? Oh, were you muted?
I was.
Got it. Okay, so I believe trustees, Dave, go ahead and mute. Sorry.
Trustee Decker, I believe that trustees will be able to make motions and seconds because we'll be able to see you on the screen and you'll be able to chat to me, the host, and I can indicate that to the chair.
Okay, thanks. There's terrible feedback right now. I don't know if it's just me, but it's very difficult to hear. I'm so-
I hear it too. There's terrible, this is echo. It's not just you. Thank you, and there is written comment in the, as attachments to the agenda, which begin on page 17 that are available to the trustees to read. And then we move on to item number six, which is our community connection. And so I believe that Dr. Watson will be introducing our community connection, which is Cindy Farr from the Health Promotion Division, and she's the director. So I'll leave it to you, Dr. Watson.
Yes, thank you, Chair Holland. I've asked Cindy Farr from the County Health Office to be here this evening, which she graciously agreed to do over Zoom. And Cindy and her colleagues have been updating us about once a week. Every Wednesday, we get a report from the County Health Office regarding the current state of COVID. So I thought it would be good if Cindy could be here and present for a few minutes. So Cindy, can you unmute and talk with the board about the current state of COVID in our county?
Yep, thanks, Rob. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, so every week we have, or every other week, we have a meeting with all of the superintendents in Missoula County and try to give a little bit of an update on what we've got going on as far as COVID in our county. We have now moved those meetings to, every other week, we were meeting weekly. And in the meantime, we are actually providing a, basically just a short report that gives a snapshot of what we're seeing in Missoula County for COVID cases. And I'm just going to apologize in advance, I am doing this meeting from home, so if you hear my toddler in the background, sorry for any distraction there. So the report that you all should have in your packet is from last week, and I can go over that, and I'll give you a little bit of an update as we go over it, as I did just look at the new numbers today as well. So as of right now, the cases do remain very stable, and active cases are still continuing to decrease at this time. We are keeping a really close eye on things as the university is back in school, as well as public schools and private schools are back in school right now. So we want to just keep a really close eye on what's going on there. Our weekly positivity rate for the last seven days is currently at 1.4%. So that means that 1.4% of all the tests that are being done for COVID in our county are coming back positive. That's really low. We would really like to continue to see that number stay low. Our rolling 14-day reproductive rate, which is how many people actually get infected once they are exposed to a positive case, has been remaining below one. We are seeing a little bit of an uptick as of this week. It was going down for a while, now it's going up again, but it still remains below one. So that means that for every, for every person who's infected with COVID, less than one person actually gets infected from that person. Sources of exposure in our current active cases show that the majority of the exposure to a contact is being a contact of a confirmed case, which is good because that means that we are able to identify those contacts, get them quarantined, get them isolated, then get them tested, and identify those cases really early. So that's what we would like to see currently. I believe 46% of all of our active cases are from being a contact to a case. Last week, 7% of our active cases were in the zero to nine age range, and 25% were in the 10 to 19 age range. That number's actually gone up this week. So approximately 9% of our active cases are zero to nine years old, and 25% of our active cases are 10 to 19 years old. So again, we're just keeping a really close eye on that number. We do continue to update our website on all of these figures. So if you want to take a look at them outside of this meeting, definitely go to missoula.co/cvirus. And on the right-hand side of the website is a link that says epidemiological data. And if you click that link, you can see all of the graphs that really, really detail out a lot of this information. So that is all that I have at this time.
Thank you, Cindy, and thanks for being here and being our community connection. And it sounds like it's a good time to let you go because you have a busy household. So we'll turn it back over to Superintendent Dr. Watson as number 7A, our announcements from him, which will include some additional information related to what Cindy has just told us. So thank you again, Cindy, for being here.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Okay, under my superintendent's report, I have two items this evening. The first item is to welcome a few of our student trustees. We don't have all of them this evening, but we do have two that are on the Zoom tonight. And I just wanted to welcome them and introduce them to the board. So we have Daisy Kalina and Malone Ingram, both students at Sentinel High School. And they're both on the Zoom this evening, so I don't know if it's okay with the chair. I'll have them just unmute and say hello to the board.
That would be great.
Daisy, do you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. So we have our first report for this month. So we're officially back in school before we actually give this month's report. I'll do a brief introduction. So hi, I'm Daisy Kalina, and I'm here today with Malone Ingram. We're excited to be Sentinel Student Trustees this year. We look forward to giving you all monthly updates on the Sentinel Student Body, as well as getting some insight on what goes on at these meetings. Our first official report is fairly short as school has just started. So now I'll turn it over to Malone, who will be giving our first report. Thank you.
Thanks, Daisy.
So I'm Malone, and our Sentinel Spartan ambassadors did a great job welcoming the new students and adjusting to all the COVID changes. On their first day at Sentinel, freshmen were split into two groups amongst their homerooms, and that left no more than 10 students in a group. And they were given a tour of the school and welcomed by upperclassmen and just kind of shown around. And then fall sports are back in session as well. Our girls soccer team beat Butte 6-0 at home on Tuesday, and they tied Hellgate on Thursday. And upcoming soccer games are Glacier and Flathead. And our freshman football team played Big Sky on Thursday, and they won. And we have more upcoming football games, soccer games, and volleyball games the next weeks. And since school has only been back in session for two weeks, that's all we have to report, but we're excited to work more off the board and our own student body. Thank you.
Well, welcome to you both, and we look forward to your, hopefully, longer reports as things get busier at schools. But thank you for being here, and we do look forward to meeting the other student trustees as well.
Yeah, thank you very much, Daisy and Malone. Appreciate your time this evening and appreciate your commitment to the Board of Trustees. Okay, this is the second half of my update, and what I wanted to do is just provide the board with a brief update on our response to COVID and sort of our plans that we've worked on so far and what we can expect in the next few weeks. So as you're all aware, but just want to remind everybody, we're on a hybrid schedule for in-person learning. And what we've done is we've moved the A through K is meeting on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, and L through Z is meeting on Thursdays and Fridays. We're saving Monday as the full remote learning day. I know that this summer, when we chatted about the schedule, we were looking at Wednesdays, but it seemed to make the most sense to leave it on Mondays because we had several Mondays in a row starting the school year where we had, we were not in school on Monday because of Labor Day and other things. So we're leaving the full remote learning day on Mondays going forward. So I know there was some confusion in the community. We apologize for that. But Mondays is our full remote learning day. And then we have half the kids on Tuesday, Wednesday, and half the kids on Thursday, Friday. This is what we call the hybrid schedule or the blended schedule. We also started the Missoula Online Academy today. 1,960 students, that's roughly 20% of our student population, has selected to do virtual, 100% virtual learning. So one of the trustees had asked me for a small breakdown on that. So about 43% of the students are K-5 students, 24% 6-8, and 33% at the high school level. About 11% of our students in the MOA are special education students, which is fairly close to the percentage that we have district-wide. So that's about what we have district-wide in terms of number of special ed students. What we're currently working on with the MOA, obviously getting things kicked off, was a little shaky today. Zoom actually crashed this morning, and not just for us, but for schools across the country. And then it came back up shortly after that. But that was definitely a headache this morning with the MOA. The other thing is just making sure students have the login information and parents have the information. Has been difficult as we get started, but we're confident in the team that's working on the MOA. They're doing a great job. Not only do we have Ray Cooper, our tech director, she's got some administrative staff that she's working with. There's teachers in the MOA. Assistant Superintendent Russ Lodge has done a great job over the last three or four weeks hiring teachers for the MOA where we needed teachers. So it's some great stuff going on. I know the MOA is just getting started, but we obviously are, it's an important program to us. We want to make sure those students feel welcome back to the start of their school year. I wanted to update the board as well on food service. As you may recall, that we were offering, we are currently offering food service not only for students that are in school, but also students that are at home. And the way we're doing that is encouraging them to go to their closest school and offering the meals at the door of that school. We haven't had a lot of takers on that, so we're going to have to figure out why that is and figure out maybe there's a better way to get food out to the community. Also, some really, I guess, exciting news or some good news. We heard from OPI today and USDA. They continue to look at their waiver for free school lunches. And they updated that waiver today, which would allow us to give free lunches and free breakfasts for all students, no matter of their eligibility in free introduced lunch or not. So it's similar to what we were doing last spring, but we've been allowed to carry that forward into this fall, and that would go all the way through December 31st. And that's for any student, whether they're in person or on remote learning or at home. Any student that's under the age of 18, we can provide that service. And so what we'll do in the next couple of weeks is try to figure out how to make sure that that's available to kids, no matter what they're doing, whether they're on remote learning or at school. Let's see. Childcare and after-school care. Wanted to just update the board, after-school care is going great. I talked to the principals today about the numbers they're seeing. Not a lot of families taking advantage of the after-school care, except with the exception of Lowell. Lowell has worked with the Parks and Rec Department to create a free after-school program, and that one is definitely attracting a lot of students. But we'll have to watch that in the next few weeks to see if the numbers go up in after-school care or not. But remember that we were committed to trying to make sure we had a program at every school. And then the childcare situation, we are offering a limited amount of childcare for our employees, and that's going well as well, but we want to continue that as we go forward. Technology, we, using COVID money that we received last spring, we did order more technology, more computers. Unfortunately, there was a shipping snafu, and so we didn't get those when we thought we would in August. And so we're hopefully going to have those by September, the end of September. But we, our goal with the technology and the laptops is try to get to one-to-one, at least at grades six through 12, so that students, all students had access to technology. Really wish they would have been here for the start of the school year, but unfortunately, outside of our control, we were not the only district that was impacted by this snafu. But hopefully, that technology will get here sooner rather than later. We also have hotspots still available, and we're exploring other options for internet access through a contract with Spectrum. I wanted to talk briefly about the hybrid schedule, just so the board has an understanding. I mean, we've been in school now for two weeks, well, just a little, a little over two weeks if you count today. And so, you know, we've got some, we definitely have some benefits of hybrids and some drawbacks to the schedule. So I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of these and things that we're thinking about as we go forward. A couple of the benefits of the hybrid schedule. As we get confirmed cases, or in the sense if we have close contacts of students in school, the hybrid schedule has really helped us sort of manage that with the Health Department, given us enough time between when kids are in school to try to track those confirmed cases or the close contacts. So I do appreciate the hybrid schedule because of that reason. We've been able to manage the confirmed cases that we have received. Under that hybrid schedule has been really, really good. Also, as I walk around to schools and try to get into classrooms, what I'm seeing is that fewer number of kids in the classes really helps with our protocols. It helps because teachers can kind of manage the students and teach them the protocols, the safety protocols. That really helps a lot with smaller numbers. As the numbers go up, it gets a little tougher to do that. A surprising thing that I learned last week in talking with a few of the elementary principals and teachers is that with smaller numbers of kids in the class, the teachers feel like they're moving faster than they normally would in previous years, and they're actually going into a little bit more depth with having fewer kids in the room. So that's kind of a benefit of hybrid that we didn't expect. But our teachers feel like they've gotten further along in teaching protocols than they have in previous years. And then the other thing we're noticing with special education students is a lot more inclusion with smaller numbers. So assuming we have enough staff that can go into the classrooms with the students, we are seeing more inclusion with the hybrid model. There are some drawbacks to the hybrid schedule, and I just want to be clear, as we try to weigh out the pros and the cons, this definitely is things that we're concerned about. So the hybrid schedule is very staff-intensive because as a teacher, you have to not only prepare your lesson for the day for the students that are there, but you also have to prepare something for the students that are at home. In addition, the students that are at home may or may not have access to technology. Hopefully, that'll get better as we get, we get our shipment of laptops and we get the internet access. But that is an issue, that there could be students at home that are lacking technology. As far as the number of staff, it does require more staff in person because you've got the teacher, but also we need to make sure the teacher has periodic breaks throughout the day because they're with those students, you know, for the majority of the day. That just requires more numbers, more adults in the building. From a teaching standpoint, it takes a lot longer to plan, which is why that Monday is so important for us because the teacher is planning for the week, but they're planning for both in-person and remote. And so they really need that time on Monday to plan and work with other teachers to develop a plan around that. So it has been very helpful that, having that Monday for the teachers to work on planning. And then at high school level and at middle school level, what we've noticed is because the students are only in school basically two days a week, they're getting, they're moving through the material fairly quickly, and there's just less time in a given period of time, like over a quarter. There's going to be less time that they're actually in class with their teacher during that quarter. So that means the teacher has to move pretty fast at the high school and middle school level. And so that is creating some concerns for our students as well. So just to be clear, I mean, there are some drawbacks to the hybrid schedule. As we start thinking about next steps, I want to just leave the board with a couple of thoughts. So one thing I've heard loud and clear, not only from staff but from parents that I've spoken to, is they really want some consistency and some predictability around the schedule. And I completely understand that as a family, you know, as family, you would want that predictability for your kids and your family. Teachers want that predictability for planning. So that's really important to us, but keep in mind that we're dealing with a pandemic, and it's really hard to predict what's going to happen next. So as much as we can, and we start thinking about the next step for our district, I want to encourage the board to think about, you know, being consistent and predictable as much as we can with the next, with the next step. It would be great if we could come back, if I could come back to the board on September 22nd with a plan for first quarter even. So our first quarter goes from now until November 6th. It would be nice to have a plan for the whole quarter. That would be predictable and consistent for parents. But keep in mind that it's all dependent on the case counts, and so we have to be ready to go backwards if we need to, or we have to be ready to be flexible with that plan. But if we can be a little bit consistent and predictable, I know that families and teachers would appreciate that. The other thing I heard loud and clear so far as I speak to people is we really want to be conservative with these next steps. We just started the school year, and teachers, the hybrid schedule is brand-new for our teachers. They're just kind of getting the hang of it right now. So it's really, I think it's our job to be really conservative on how quickly we make moves in that hybrid model. We want to make sure that our teachers have enough time to work within the hybrid model. We also know that it's actually helping with our contact tracing. And so for that reason alone, we should be very conservative before we just jump to the next level. So those are some of the things that are going through our brains as planners. We haven't made any decisions. What I've committed to our parents is that, number one, we're going to be on this hybrid model at least through September 25th, maybe longer, but at least through September 25th, just for planning purposes. The other thing I've committed is that Mondays are the remote day so that parents can plan around Mondays rather than Wednesdays. And then the other thing I'll just say is that we're going to keep working through this. We're hopefully going to develop a quarter-long schedule that I could bring back to the board. And so what I'll do this week and next week is get feedback from other folks on that schedule and come back to the board on September 22nd with sort of what we believe is the best path forward for quarter one. So with that, I know that was a lot for a superintendent update, but I just wanted to make sure that I got all that stuff out. So thank you for listening.
Thanks, Dr. Watson, for your report. The next item on the-
Chair Holland, I'm sorry. Trustee Sturges has a question.
We normally don't have questions during the report, so I would suggest that Trustee Sturges calls Dr. Watson tomorrow with her question. And I can't see if she's not here. But if that's okay with you, Trustee Sturges, that would be the- But if that's okay with you, trustee Sturbe, that would be the more efficient protocol. So thanks.
Actually, I have a question. I think it needs to clarify something that he gave me in the update.
Oh, okay.
I would just like to better understand what remote Mondays mean for the students. Do they need to check in, like on the other remote days, or are they just working on what's been assigned in the past?
Yeah, appreciate that question. We are asking teachers to work through that now. Remote Mondays do require a check-in. We really haven't had a remote Monday, because yesterday was Labor Day, and the previous Monday was a PIR day. Our first remote Monday is actually September 14th, and our teachers are working through that process now, but students will need to check in on that day.
Okay.
Just know that the principal didn't tell me that, so I think that needs to be clarified to the public, please.
Thank you.
Thanks. And so now we'll move on to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. There was one item on it. We use the consent agenda as a board for items that we routinely see. And so the reason that it's called the consent agenda means that the trustees will not be discussing the item or items listed under the consent agenda, although any trustee has the ability to make a request at any time, even at this point, to ask an item come off the consent agenda, so there can be discussion by the board. We do take public comment, however. And so the one item is to ratify the out-of-district attendance agreements. And so the recommendation is that the trustees approve the attached out-of-district elementary attendance agreements. But I thought there were some secondary ones, too, so let me double-check. I think there's both, so we typically do those as one motion. So the motion would be to approve the attached out-of-district attendance agreements found in the attachment to the agenda. Is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Oldperson. As I indicated, we don't have board discussion on items on the consent agenda. Is there any public
There may be public comment. I'm just checking. We have one hand raised. Ms. Muir, is your hand raised for a public comment on this agenda item? Okay, I don't think we can contact her right now, so I don't think we have any other public comment.
Thank you for checking. So all trustees in favor of the motion to ratify the out-of-district attendance agreements, please indicate by raising your hand. And I see all trustees on Zoom have raised their hands, and all trustees in the meeting have raised their hands. And I don't think we have trustee McDonald yet.
That's correct.
And I know she had another obligations concerning families, so... Then we move on to approving the personnel report, which is found on page 54. Dave, is there anything of note on that report?
No, it would be a standard personnel report.
So is there a motion to approve the items on the provided personnel report? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Avgeris. As, just as a caution, we don't, and trustee Mercer, too, so we'll have two seconds. Sure.
Yes, so when we approved some of the telecommute requests from staff, we had to backfill the positions into the main building, so we had adequate staffing.
So he's existing physician, then?
Correct.
Thanks. And just a reminder, you have to turn your microphones on, so we can hear, but that's okay.
It's not good.
I have, I was trying to get to it fast enough, but we have a system at this point, although we're hoping to get a better system at some point. But unless the person has the three buttons on their thing, on their pushing the buttons mechanism that allows you to speak, then everyone has to be off before the next person can speak. And I don't know where the three-person protocol thing went, so, anyway. So any other questions? See, none. Is there a seconded motion yet, Tracy? I don't know where we were at.
Seconded by...
And seconded by, oh, trustee Avgeris, right. So as a caution, we don't discuss any individuals who are listed on the personnel report, but if any trustee has a general comment or wants general discussion, is there anyone who would like general discussion concerning the motion to approve the personnel report? I'm not seeing any hands raised or any other indications. So again, the same caution, is there any public comment on the motion to approve the personnel report? And again, we don't accept comments on individuals who are listed in the report.
I do not see any indication of public comment.
Thanks. So all trustees in favor of the motion to approve the items on the personnel report for this month, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present, either in person or via Zoom. Now we move on to teaching and learning, which is, B1 is to approve the Montana Office of Public Instruction discretionary grant application. And so Assistant Superintendent Russ Lodge will be explaining about a grant application that was submitted.
Yeah, if it's okay, I've asked Amy Shattuck to be on the call this evening. Amy is Director of Federal Programs, and this grant is specifically related to that, so I'll let Amy discuss that.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me? Great. So tonight I'm sharing with you an application for a discretionary grant under IDEA, Project REAL. Before Karen Allen retired, she confirmed with OPI for one more year of extension for this grant. This helps, this grant helps support an MTSS multi-tiered systems of support consultant, .5 FTE. In this consultant, what things that she will be doing is providing coaching and consultation for MTSS schools, as well as facilitating self-assessments and professional development. She's also part of the steering committee, the state steering committee, so she'll be traveling there if they have in-person meetings. She's also done some book studies in the past and would like to continue to do so, so to help with team training across MCPS. So that's what this grant is for.
Do any trustees have any questions for Ms. Shattuck? I don't see any hands up. So is there a motion to approve the grant application summary that is found on page 62? Moved by trustee Lorenzen, is there a second? Sorry. Oh, trustee Decker and trustee Wake have seconded the motion. Is there any board discussion?
Trustee Decker.
Trustee Decker, go ahead. Thanks.
Thanks. I'm glad that we're able to continue having support around the multi-tiered systems of support. The district over the past, you know, 10 years or more has put a tremendous amount of resources and professional development into building that system across the schools. And so the more we can do to support staff with implementing a positive learning environment and all of the guidance strategies and behavior management strategies that go along with that, the better. You know, as I think most people are aware, behavior challenges are one of the largest reasons why people leave the classroom if they do, and why teachers burn out. And so this role and the support for teachers is a really important piece to me of supporting them in that part of their work. I would love to continue trying to find ways that we could support more, because a halftime coach for the entire district is, you know, the beginning. I would love to see more.
I agree. Thanks, Grace.
Any other trustee comment? I'll just echo what trustee Decker said. I was planning to say something like that, but she said it much more eloquently and in much more detail. So thank you, trustee Decker, for that, because I do echo everything you said. Is there any public comment?
I am not seeing any indication of public comment.
Okay, then all trustees in favor of approving the grant application summary for the Montana Office of Public Instruction discretionary grant, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present, either in person or via Zoom. Then we move on to approve enrollments for early kindergarten program. I see that Assistant Superintendent Lodge is going to be talking about that, but he has a, needs a second to move to a microphone. So with that, if you want to explain, especially for some of the new trustees, what this is...
This is our early kindergarten program for four-year-olds. It's the third year of the program, and it primarily serves kids who are four years old in our title schools. So we have four title schools that we specifically recruit from. We have 32 slots, and if we don't fill them, then we go outside from those four schools and see if we can fill them. It's a 9:30 to 2:30, Monday through Friday, program. These kids are regular education program kids. We receive A and B. We receive dollars from the state for them to be here. And we advertise through the district office, through flyers. This is a really nice program. It's a good way, and we've got 26 kids tonight for you to approve. And really, that's it. It's a pre-kindergarten year recruited in specific areas to help kids get off to a great start in public school.
Are there any questions for Russ from the board? Trustee Vogel has a question.
Oh, I forgot my question. Hang on a second. Did you say you had 32 slots, and you have 26 kids enrolled? So what happens when you go over that number? Would you have, would you continue to enlarge that, or are you holding it at 32?
Yeah, it stays at 32. That's what we're funded for. So there's a teacher and a pair with each room. So we've got basically two classrooms, intending to keep it small. So 32 is the top. This year, we're just, we were able to recruit 26, and so that's where we're starting the year with. We usually recruit from April to early June, and then with the COVID year, we went into July. So we're a little bit off from our normal routines, and maybe that attributed a little bit to the child find, but generally, that's it.
Trustee Decker has a question, and then I have a question, unless it's the same question. So go ahead, trustee Decker.
My question is whether the preschool, sorry, early kindergarten children are attending on the hybrid schedule also, coming the part week, and if any early kindergarten children are doing the online academy.
This program, we have five days a week. So it's Monday through Friday. We can control the class size. They're Jefferson. It's much easier to do the social distancing and the masks. So this is a five-day-a-week program, a bit of an exception. To my knowledge, yeah, there's nobody in the online academy, nobody in the hybrid. Little four-year-olds, just five days a week. It's a nice deal.
Sorry. And that was my question, so I don't need to ask my question. So any other questions from any trustees? You're good? Okay. Let me just check. So it doesn't appear that there are any other questions. And so the recommendation, it's an elementary action item, so the K-12 trustees would be voting on it. Is there a motion from a K-12 trustee to approve the enrollment of the students identified by initials only found on page 64 for the Early Kindergarten Program 2020-2021? Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Whose hand is up? Trustee Lorenzen, and seconded by trustee Oldperson. I apologize, I have to have my glasses up to read, and then down to see. Hands up or down. So I apologize for the bit of delay. It's a non-Zoom delay, but a delay nonetheless. So we have a seconded motion. Is there any discussion from any trustee? Any public comment?
There is discussion from trustee Decker.
Oh, trustee Decker, go ahead. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm not catching the hands up.
Okay, it might not be exactly the right time to say so, but Legislative Subcommittee on Education has been regularly looking at the question of pre-K over the interim, and is in the process of preparing a bill around pre-K. We hope that'll roll into the legislative session. So people should stay tuned, because it really builds on the kind of A and B model, at least what they've been discussing, the A and B model that funds our early kindergarten program at this point. So there could be exciting developments ahead. So just keep, their last interim meeting is next week.
Thank you. Any other board discussion? Any public comment?
I do not see any public comment.
Then all K-12 trustees in favor of the motion to approve the enrollment of the students identified for the OPI early kindergarten program, please indicate by raising your And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Then we move on to item number 10A, which is to declare K-12 trustee district seat vacant, and to identify the process for filling the vacancy on the board. And so before I turn it over to Pat as our clerk to explain the procedure, I do want to thank Mike Smith, who had submitted his resignation for his 10 years of service to the board. And he's always been an active, engaged trustee, and we understand that, you know, life changes and things get really busy, and so he found it necessary to resign. I talked to him, and it was with great hesitation. He did so, I believed it was appropriate at this time. So we do now have a vacancy. So thank you, Mike, and I'll hope to see you sometime, to be able to take you out to lunch and say thank you in person. But in the meantime, I'll turn it over to Pat to explain the process. And then I might, I would ask for an informal poll afterwards in terms of when we would meet to interview applicants. That's why there's a TBD in the schedule. So I'll turn it over to Pat.
All right, thank you. So this happens occasionally where trustee resigns or otherwise has to leave the position before the term. The term of this position is up in May, so whoever would be appointed would then be expected or asked to run for that position in May. On page 65, we've put together a proposed timeline for filling the position tonight. The main action taken is to declare the position vacant, which is the language from the statute. And from that point, the 60-day clock runs, begins to run for the Board of Trustees here to appoint a successor. And within that period of time, what's contemplated is that a prospective trustee file a letter of interest, answering a couple of questions that are outlined on the posting that we attached on page 64. With those letters of interest, we would, as trustees, you would rather interview the candidates, and then make a selection of the successor trustee. That successor trustee would be seated then at the regularly scheduled meeting here on this timeline suggested to be the October 27th regular meeting of the board. So for tonight, it's a matter of declaring the position vacant, and really authorizing a process that's consistent with what's outlined in the timeline. This is a process we've used in the past. The board, when we, when the board last went through this process, they revised some of the questions on, found on page 64, under C. some of the questions on, found on page 64 under, under C near the bottom and, and really, I'd say cleaned those up quite a bit. So there's, there's two questions that are requested for a prospective applicant when they submit their letter of interest. Otherwise, the, the publication on page 64 outlines what would be expected in, in terms of qualification. The, the prospective trustee would have to be a registered voter and live within the elementary district boundary and be able to comply with a conflict of interest policy that's referenced Policy 1512. So with, with that, as, as Chair Holland mentioned, the, the TBD identified on the timeline would be a deadline to submit the application and when to hold the interview. The, the interview, when we've had a number of candidates, has been held in a special meeting of the board. Last time we had one candidate and the interview was held right in front of the board meeting. So I, I think the, the difficulty here would just be knowing the number of candidates, but I'd say when we've had K-12 trustee positions open in the past, they've typically generated a, a number of candidates, up to certainly on average five, I would say. But I don't have any sort of scientific background for that, but I know that we've had more than one when there's been a position like this one open. So, so with that, we could see what the board's interest might be in terms of a special meeting to interview or trying to do so at a regular board meeting.
Thanks, Pat. So I guess the question would be, would we want to allow for three weeks' time or so so applications are due by the end of September? So then at the, the first, well, actually, if we had the applications due before the second board meeting in September, even though it's kind of a tight timeframe, if we can get the word out, then we could at the second meeting in September, take a look at how many candidates there are and make a determination whether we'd want to meet, say for the hour before the first meeting in October, or have a special meeting? Because it is somewhat dependent on the number of candidates, because one or two candidates is fairly manageable when we're coming to meet together for a regular board meeting. But if there, I think at one time we had five to six candidates and it was a special board meeting. So if, I don't think it takes a motion to set the date. I think Superintendent Watson and I can pick it, but just generally speaking, an informal poll, would having the deadline be the, let's see, Friday before the next board meeting? That's two weeks away? Would people be comfortable with that in terms of getting the word out? And it will be published, I mean, we'll have it, the notification's out in various means. So is it anyone uncomfortable with that pace? I don't see anyone indicating, yes, they're uncomfortable, so we'll plan on doing that. And then at the second board meeting in September, we will talk about the mechanism by which to do interviews and then we can make a determination because that way we will be able to seat the person, or to select the person at the end of either that special board meeting that would be a one-hour board meeting before the regular one, or a real special board meeting in additional time. And that would allow us to make sure that the new trustee could be seated at the regular board meeting on September, or October 27th. That, I see nods around the table and all. So with that, the statutes are a little conflicting. Three lawyers took a look at them and there's back-to-back statutes that have somewhat different language in them, but in, in an attempt to be on the conservative side, that it would, I would be asking for a motion to declare the K-12 position vacant and to authorize, authorize the administration to initiate the process for appointment as has been generally outlined in the attachment. So is there such a motion? Moved by trustee Lorenson and seconded by trustee Old Person. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Mercer?
So is it, am I understanding this correctly, that regardless of whether we declare it vacant, the 60-day clock is running?
That's the inconsistency that one statute says the time starts at whatever date the resigning trustee has identified it as his end date. The very next section of the same, you know, area of statutes says the time starts running on the, on date that the board has declared the vacancy open. So it's a really good question and the answer is, we're going to assume it has already started running, but, but it's an inconsistency in the Montana statutes. So, but thanks for your question. It's a good one because it, there is some inconsistency. So is, do we have a seconded motion, I believe? Is there any other board comment? Trustee Old Person?
Trustee Sturbis has a question?
Thanks for helping look for everybody. Trustee Sturbis, I'm sorry, it's hard for me to catch everybody.
Yeah, I was just wondering, do all the trustees get to vote on the candidate or is it just elementary?
No, it's everyone since it's a K-12, so all trustees do.
Okay.
Actually, it's a good question. I'll run that by legal counsel and so I will, I will send out an email to all trustees clarifying that. Okay, thanks for the question or comment, which helps get more information to everyone. Any other comments? Any public comment?
There is no public comment at this time.
Okay, all trustees in favor of the motion to declare the K-12 position vacant and to authorize administration to initiate the process for appointment, please indicate by raising your hand. And, and that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Thank you for that. Then we have reached item number 11, which is public comment on non-agenda items. For anyone who was in the public, who wasn't able to get to the meeting at the beginning, we take public comment at the beginning and end. Is there any public comment on any item that wasn't covered on the agenda? And it...
There is no public comment at this time.
Thanks, Hatton. And so...
Sorry, sorry, yes, I do see an individual waving their hand. Ms. Marissa McClintock.
I would like to know what the criterion will be for phase shift. You said you were looking at things very closely.
Public comment is just public comment. It's not a question and answer period. So if you have a specific question, the appropriate protocol is to call Superintendent Wa, Watson about it, but you're welcome to make a public comment.
Okay. That was my question rather than a comment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
No, there is no other public, oh, sorry, yes, somebody just raised their hand. Ms. Blue, would you like to unmute and make your comment?
We would love to. Hello, Casey Blue, Missoula Education Association with a brand-new sweatshirt that says it, you know, just so I can brag a little bit. I just wanted to give a big shout out. Technically, part of my comment belongs under the last agenda item, but for all of you for being trustees, for sticking with us and for reading all of our vast amounts of email that we have sent, we appreciate you. I also have been asked on behalf of several educators to make sure that you understand that the invitation to come visit classrooms in this hybrid model is absolutely a sincere one. If you have a school that you're interested in going to visit, I am more than happy to connect you with an educator who would love to have you in, to have you watch handwashing protocols actually take place, to see what it looks like with half of our class in the classroom, to ask questions about how the block is going at middle and high school. If you want me to go with you to give you a tour, I'm more than happy to. If you'd like a student tour, we can arrange that. We'll make sure that protocols are in place to keep everyone safe, but we do think that it's very important that you come in and see what the hybrid model looks like in classrooms, especially as you go into the next phase where we, you know, have a decision and an action item on this. So thank you for your time. We'd love to see you in watching teaching and learning take place and we value your time. Thanks for spending it with us on Tuesday nights.
Thanks for that public comment. Is there any other public comment, Hatton?
No, I do not see any other public comment.
Since there is no other public comment, then our meeting is adjourned and thank you all for being here. Thanks so much.